We're getting in the back room, tell the meeting order. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the and to the Republic for which it stands.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbuk.
Present.
Ron Vaughn. Brad Newbecker. Jenny David. Here. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Oh, are we gonna talk about this high banks thing today?
Um, do you like to?
I brought it up last week.
I think we have it on the committee of the whole for which we don't have next week, so the week.
On.
Yes, Tim has reached out to, we'll discuss that in the committee reports. Anything else?
Boom. Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbuk with support from Commissioner Newbecker to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries item three A, review of the minutes, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, regular meeting minutes.
I looked them over, I'll make a motion to accept them as presented. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the July twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries item three B, August fourth, twenty twenty two, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I reviewed them, I made a motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbuk.
I support.
Support from Commissioner Scott to approve the August fourth, twenty twenty two, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries item three C, August fourth, twenty twenty two, closed session meeting minutes. I believe we all had those in front of us when we got here.
I just reviewed those, make a motion that we accept it as presented. I support.
We have a motion, Commissioner Vaughn with support from Commissioner Newbecker to to approve the August fourth, twenty twenty two, closed session meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries item four, public comment on agenda items only. I think we all know the rules by now. State your name for the record, speak only to the chairperson, standing behind the podium when speaking, limit comments to three minutes or fewer, and follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Is there any, this is for agenda items only.
Uh oh.
Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item five, correspondence from Clinton County related to opposition to House bill four seven three zero and Clinton County related to support for expansion of broadband internet infrastructure. Those have been received and filed. Item six, action I consent calendar, I think we can combine. I was thinking seven A, C, D, E. Does have any?
Which ones you have?
A, resolution to reset G I S hosting proposal, C, resolution to accept bus driver training proposal, D, resolution to accept proposal for annex building renovations, item E, resolution to certify representative to the MERS twenty twenty two retirement conference. Are you guys okay with that? Is there any you'd like to discuss?
I had a question about D last night, I had a nine one one meeting.
Okay, we'll take D out. So A, C, and E?
That's fine.
You guys okay with that?
Yep. Yep. Make a motion to A, C, and E. Support.
Okay, I'm gonna get confused on this, I know it. A, C, and E, this is item seven A is resolution to accept G I S hosting proposal, A seven C is resolution to accept bus driver training proposal, E is resolution to certify representatives to the MERS twenty twenty two retirement conference. We had a motion from whom?
I did.
Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbuk. Any discussion on those guys? Roll call vote.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Item seventy, resolution to approve school resource deputy agreement. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. The Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office is willing and able to provide school resource supplemental law enforcement services to the West Branch City area schools through education enforcement and by cooperative efforts, the school resource deputy program strives to assist the schools with providing a safe school and neighborhood environment. Approval of the resolution will provide a school resource deputy to the West Branch City area schools for a period of three years at a cost of seventy five thousand, seventy five thousand dollars annually paid by the school.
Make a motion to accept the resolution as presented. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbuk with support from Commissioner Vaughn, discussion. I think the biggest concern you had, Commissioner Scott, was related to the comp time, correct?
Yeah, well, yeah. First of all, it was the first of all, it was the twelve month based on a twelve month service and then comp time also, that's all, compensation. Total compensation package it was concerned about.
We got this.
We have a budget.
We got this email last night. Did you send this?
Yes.
Can you, can you explain it? Do you mind coming up? Because I, I looked at it this morning.
What that is?
Did you guys all receive this?
Yes.
This is an email related, did you get it, Commissioner Scott?
I have it here.
Okay, I don't understand it, so.
Well, it's just basically a spreadsheet that they put down at the last meeting at Chaco, we were talking about comp time, maybe it will put the hours together. So that is a spreadsheet shows the hours worked. Uh, that was carried as comp, then the first column, the second one is the hours earned. So converted to the comp time usage in the second column. The third one is hours that particularly that been used over the course of those pay periods, the dates of the pay periods in which those transactions.
This conflicts with their contract.
It does now, yes.
Well, if we sign a contract over a year ago.
In October.
Right, right, so it conflicts with that. Because they can't bank that many hours.
Forty eight hours currently by the contract, correct?
Right.
Well, which, which column is a comp time? I still don't understand.
Comp time is the hours earned.
So two hundred and fifty one for the school year from nine four to six twenty five?
Correct.
Ooh.
But that's overtime hours.
Overtime hours are.
He only worked a hundred and sixty two, so you've computed a, a column to reflect overtime.
Correct.
It's not really hours, it's, it's pay.
The first one is the hours worked.
Right.
So what would be considered overtime if he carried it as overtime, he converted the comp, which is the second one, the second column.
Okay.
For two hundred and fifty one hours of comp, and he used two hundred and eighty seven. He had a high balance coming into it, we went through the school year, by the end of the school year, we came in compliance with the contract of forty eight hours. Partly with his cooperation, but he also had a medical procedure that we were able to get that back where it was supposed to be.
Well.
So what happened, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Scott.
Well, you, you gotta back right up in why is there comp time? And I've been told now different stories. It was a regular thing, it happens, it happens because the school wants us there at the beginning of the first, the first student there and the last student to leave. Now we have a contract says forty hours. So are we going by the contract or are we going by this other?
Moving forward, we'll be going by the contract, because the contract has the forty eight hours, so what we have to establish, I don't want to speak for the sheriff, but it's the hours of operation for the school resource officer as a compliance with the contract and the forty eight hour cap.
Well, then we have an eighty hour pay period. So are you saying that we're gonna have ninety six hours each pay period?
I'm not saying that it's gonna be ninety six hours, it's gonna depend on what's established for that deputy to be at the school. If we tell the schools that they're only gonna get eight hours a day, then they're only gonna get eight hours a day. And we'll have to figure out what the best time for that is. We can get additional time with overtime or comp time to flex it. Flex time is also a possibility. Because your high numbers on some of those, I have to do with football games, and then towards the tail end of the year is the dances and stuff like that. So you had to be creative with the forty eight hours for the contract flex time. Obviously, we don't wanna get too much overtime when you deal with school resource officer. The bottom line is, at the end of the year, that number should be seventy five, one hundred dollars, and we did the job that's being requested.
For clarification, section C of the contract says the school resource deputy will be assigned to his or her school on a full-time basis of eight hours on those days, and working those hours at the school is in session for functions after hours may cause the school resource deputy to flex their schedule for that day. So we have worked into the contract some language that's establishing that eight hours, and of course, that's what our seven thousand dollar number is based on. And doesn't include, you know, on the overtime issue. So and as far as accruals, I, I'm not familiar with how you've calculated these in the past, but you know, the forty eight hour cap is absolute, our forty nine is paid, it's not a choice, it's paid. So we should never breach that forty eight number moving forward, clearly with this contract, I forget what it was, the prior contract.
It wasn't like, there was not a cap, that was how this came to be in the previous generations of the school resource officer. So there was a higher balance that was put in, so at this point, we've come back with compliance, and I know moving forward, I have to establish the hours the schools are gonna get it, the compliance with the school contract, and also it's gonna have to be more creative, whether it's flex time, what's the priorities, is it football games, is it at school from open to close? For all things are gonna have to be worked out with scheduling, and at the end of the year, the goal is to be at the seventy five one and done the job. Yeah, I don't wanna talk to the sheriff, the sheriff will talk with the schools and establish as far as parameters of what hours are gonna be best for operations.
Well, with the new system, it's gonna be monitored a little, I don't say closer, I mean, that's definitely what I mean, but there's, there's gonna be.
Better tools in place to be able to.
Monitor this.
Monitor the forty eight hour cap.
Hi, everyone, from the way to you to payroll, I mean, everybody's gonna be able to see the same data.
Right.
In real time, we're not having to wait for any calculation, it'll be there, we'll know.
Right, so moving forward, it's gonna be a lot simpler than the paper trails that were previously caused.
Right.
So I think at this point, we're at that turning point where this is gonna lay out, it's just a matter now of establishing the hours of operations within the contract boundaries and what schools are gonna need for the coverages for the different, that's some for school office. Flex time is gonna be somewhat important, but then again, you have to work with contract.
What, what is flex time mean, like, so was flex time on this that you, you presented to us, or is?
Flex time was not represented, this is just comp time. Flex time would be moving a shift on a Friday because of a football game.
Okay.
So instead of coming in at seven thirty in the morning, your hours are gonna be worked, so we can be there.
Right.
So I apologize, but.
Any other questions, guys? Commissioner Scott, do you have any other questions?
Well, we had a conversation the other day, and, you know, I said that we got two officers on, you know, on the road you know, in the evening hours at six o'clock, and, and, you know, my question was, why can't one go to the football game while the other one runs the roads? I mean, we went six years without anybody after six.
But now we do have a night shift, and we do have a responsibility for the community, we're at that night shift, yes, that night shift deputy can go and spend a few hours there and be called out if there's an emergency to back this part, so that might be part of the flex time type of thing to where that school resource officer leaves.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and that's all part of the scheduling.
That way, we're staying within the budget.
Right, and at the end of the year.
And the contract.
And the contract. The end of the year, the, had to be, the best we are, it'd be in the seventy five one.
Right.
For both of those contracts, so.
Well, as long as everybody understands that, that's what, that's all we're talking, monetary. That's all we're talking.
And I appreciate this last two years, because I've learned a heck of a lot from one side of the table to the other, and what it's like to have a budget come to the end of the fiscal year and try to fit everything in.
Well, I, I don't wanna have to go to the school and say we gotta up the price to a hundred thousand because, you know, we're paying out two hundred and eighty seven hours of overtime.
And again, that's where we're gonna have to be creative with.
They're gonna look at me and say, why do you do that? Because we don't wanna pay our teachers two hundred and eighty, every one of them two hundred and eighty seven hours of overtime.
Correct.
You know.
I think it'll help.
Or anybody else.
I think it'll help with the new, the new system significantly. It can be monitored much closer. All right, any other? Do we have a motion? Do you guys, any other discussion on it?
Thanks for your explanation.
So is the school board is the West Branch City, now if, if this is approved here, then it goes back to the school board and they vote on it?
Right.
Okay. And this is the exact same as what I'm impressed, Scott?
It is.
Okay.
Except for the name of the school.
You fixed that, right?
Yeah.
A roll call vote.
Brandon.
Yes.
Benny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Motion carries item seventy, resolution to accept proposal for annex building renovation, this is seven D, I see you added a ten percent contingency allocation, just for unknowns, correct? I've seen that last night. Do you guys have any, the, the cost of that was a hundred and ninety nine thousand, nine hundred and forty eight dollars and forty six cents submitted by Jack Morris Construction. Total cost not to exceed the hundred and ninety nine thousand, nine hundred and forty eight dollars and forty six cents, plus a contingency allocation of ten percent. Funding for this project is provided under American Rescue Plan Act. I'm gonna make that motion. Is there anybody who's for that motion? We have a motion with support, discussion.
Yeah, one of the, one of the discussion points last night at the nine one one meeting was, um, people know that the, the nine one one have purchased new desks and whatnot, it, it's gonna be a complete new layout. I guess they're a little bit worried with the new equipment coming in. Um, you know, number one, they can't be shut down, so I think all the ceilings and everything have to be torn out of there. But another point of discussion was, they wanted to know about flooring. Um, they need to put new carpet in there, and they wanted to know whether or not through this bid, they were gonna get new carpeting put into their room through this. And I said, I, I hadn't totally read through it, I don't see anything about carpeting or flooring in any of it whatnot, they've got a bid because it's a static proof because of their equipment of like nine thousand dollars. So they are questioning whether that was gonna be included in this bid when they go through, I don't know whether any of the flooring is gonna be messed up, whatever, from tearing all this stuff out. I don't know how they're gonna keep it clean or whatever, but.
They are aware clearly of the obligation to keep nine one one running, and there's actually a line broken out, as I recall, in the bid that says just to, to make sure that happens, and a bit of extra work that they'll have to do is, is accounted for. But flooring issue is not addressed in the bid directly, but if they were to damage the floor somewhere, hopefully that will be to be fixed, and that's why we have contingencies and these things like that happen. However, if they have a, you know, special requirement for carpet, um, we'll have to sit down and talk to them about that, but may or may not be a cost that we wanna pick up.
Right.
Uh, depending on, is this carpet, it has to be replaced, is, is what you're saying, or is this just in case it's damaged?
Um, well, probably some of it's gonna have to be replaced anyway, because the new structure of the desk, whatnot, right now, if you go in there, they're all against the wall. This is gonna be a central, in the middle of the floor, so I think some of that carpet's gonna have to come out anyway, so I think they're just talking about replacing it, and they're thinking that if you're gonna do all this damage replacing, that, that would be a good time to get it all done all at once, and they just didn't know whether it was gonna be included.
Our next step, um, once the resolution is approved, I get with Jack Morris, we get the contract together, it goes to legal, but we establish the schedules. I'll make sure to sit down with Jesse, Jack.
Okay.
And we'll go over logistics of this to make sure we have that accounted for. Um, I would also suggest, if this is a special kind of carpet, to go with the new equipment that's coming in, that whatever resources nine one one has for this new equipment, maybe this gets rolled into that cost, but we'll, we'll talk with nine one one about it, figure it out, and but priority one, make sure that they're operational through the whole.
Yeah.
And that the equipment is not damaged, so that, you know, you don't ruin something that's.
Well, like I say, they're getting all new equipment, all new desk, and we can't afford to have any of that.
Again, a coordination effort will be crucial here, because we don't wanna fix something and then have to refix it after we move into employment, which is well. Make sure we get all this coordinated at once.
It's tough, because it's twenty four hour operation, so that's the tough part of it. To get in there and tear ceilings out above where they're working.
Right.
So it's gonna be a chore.
They're the ones that want this so much. They're the ones complaining, because they, they want all.
Yeah, but you can't have roof leaking or whatever it was, linking over a million dollars worth of equipment.
We're doing this, we're doing this because of what they're.
Well, I, I understand that, Greg, I, I'm just posing the question.
They gotta have some special carpet, they can buy their own carpet.
No.
They want to be separate.
But this is a lot of money, unfortunately, we only got one bid, but, uh, did you have, did you wanna add something? Commissioner Serbuk?
Go ahead and say it.
Did you wanna add something?
Go ahead, and I will say whatever.
Unfortunately, this is, this is a lot of money, but, uh, we have individuals in there, we have the animal control off, uh, officer, we have building inspections, department planning and zoning department, veteran of affairs, MSU extension office, and nine one one emergency dispatch, I, I feel like this building is definitely our responsibility to maintain. Um, and I, I feel this needs to be done, unfortunately, this amount is quite a bit, but it is what it is, so.
I think we should explore selling the building to nine one one, let them do, quite frankly. Or give it to them. Pay them rent. And also, we've got their one issue, pay the rent to nine one one. Get our generator back, so we paid for the maintenance, they said they don't want the generator, yet they're using it, so.
Who's they?
Nine one one. Bring that generator over here to the county building, county building uses a generator.
That was a big, big point back when they split off, they didn't want the generator, they didn't want it, they didn't wanna own it, but they wanted us to maintain it, this is the way it's been right along since they, they split apart. They want to, they don't want anything to do with commissioners, and they, and they don't want, and any expenses, extra expenses come up, they want the commissioners to pay for it. Now it's special carpet, and we're, and they want us to pay for it, what are you talking about? You gotta have a special desk, you buy your own desk, you gotta, carpet, you buy your own carpet. They could have stayed under the realm of the county. But no, it was this, we can't trust the commissioners thing. I've been on this thing right from the beginning. They didn't even want a commissioner on the, on their board. It was the state police lieutenant that said you should have one commissioner, it's just one vote, it's not like they can tell you what to do. Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't get it, but it's got, it's kingdoms, it's right back to this, gotta have a kingdom, gotta have my own kingdom.
I guess I respect what you guys are saying, but great now, we're talking about the building that the county owns, that we are talking about.
All right.
Maintaining for us. I wasn't been talking.
Okay.
That needs to be maintained, it's leaking. We told them when they decided to rent it, that, that they provided us with updates that they requested, we have not done any of those. Um, we have this funding. So I, that's, that's where I stand at. Commissioner Newbecker, do you have anything?
I agree with you, the, the building's ours, we're running to them. Uh, we should be taking care of that building, the generator, everything. We wanna sell it, that's another option, but I don't know if nine one one is an authority has, has that ability or not. Do you do it?
Okay.
It's definitely an option. But you're still gonna need the generator, which isn't cheap, and we're, we're obviously gonna need one too. If we bring it over there, or if we install it, I mean, but, um, I got no problem with this bid, and we can explore the carpet, and, uh, if it's feasible and within our budget, then I guess we can look at it.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Like I say, I, I sit on the board and, and I, I see both sides, I, I see Craig's thoughts and, but again, I'm, I'm kinda with Brad here, I, I think it's our building, and I think we need to maintain it right now, if at a later date, wanna sell it, whether we sell it to nine one one or sell it to whoever, so be it.
Roll call vote. Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
No.
Mark Serbuk.
No.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Motion carries item seven F, resolution to approve tax screen agreement. This resolution is sponsored by the committee of the whole, the Oklahoma Township Downtown Development Authority, DDA, was incorporated in two thousand and four and is authorized to capture certain tax revenue from various taxing authorities, which are authorized to levy taxes on property within the established downtown district. The DDA is specifically authorized pursuant to Michigan statute to enter into agreements with the taxing jurisdiction and the governing body of municipality in which the development in which the development area is located to share a portion of the captured assessed value of the district. The proposed resolution would approve an agreement with the Oklahoma Township DDA, allowing the DDA to retain a hundred percent of the assessed taxable valuation, which would have been captured for general county operations, but exclude any and all assessed taxable valuation associated with special purposes millage. I was gonna tell you, you have Ingham in the actual actual, you have, you have Ingham County in there, I seen that, I seen that last night. I seen it somewhere, you'll have to look at that. Did you guys have anything you wanted to add before we, okay?
I'd make a motion that we approve the resolutions presented. Excluding Ford. Excluding the word Ingham.
Yeah.
I seen that in there somewhere. Commissioner Serbuk? Uh, did you support it, Commissioner Newbecker?
Yes, I support it. It's down by five paragraphs.
Discussion? But did you find out from our legal team? Um, from the other DDA, if, with that break?
Attorney is on the line here and get a live update.
I don't see him.
Done.
Oh. Mister Cole Hanek? You're muted. There you go.
Tom might need to unmute him.
There you go.
Hello, can you?
Hi, yes.
And let me, and let me open that video up as well, there we go, yeah, I was blocked there for a second. And I'm sorry, I know you're talking about the tax capture, uh, excuse me. Yeah, the tax capture agreement, I was just trying to pull it up here, but what's your specific question?
We had a question on one of the other DDAs, it took like a year break and then was re-entered after, was it two thousand and four? After two thousand and four, pardon me?
So it was.
Yeah, the city itself, DDA, they had taken a year, correct?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
That timetable, but it was, had that pause period in there, I guess, for lack of another word.
If that pause then was after two thousand and four, does that exclude them possibly from the assessed taxable evaluation, special purposes millages?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, um, I'm just not recalling this issue, I mean, I'm up, I, um.
Tim, can you clarify?
Yeah, Don, we, we discussed this, um, this is a separate, um, DDA, it's not this one. Uh, was the city of West Branch, there was a period of time where the.
Uh, was the city of West Branch. There was a period of time where the city was not collecting or otherwise. The DDA timeframe had expired and then it was reconstituted. Um, at, you know, after about a year to a year and a half. And our question was, when they reconstituted or restarted it back up, did that place them under the post nineteen ninety-four rule? Uh, about allowing those whose taxes are captured to opt out or to. Put together an agreement like this, or did they fall into the pre nineteen ninety-four rules where they were able to just simply extend their uh, lifetime? And then just continue to collect all of the millages.
And, um. That does ring a bell and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just flipping through some emails and I believe that might have been something that Tim Perron. I looked at for you. I, I, I'm just not recalling, but um.
Do you know, was it Dan that you talked to?
Uh, Dan and I talked about it, but I do know there was some reference to Tim Perron and he had just, uh, it's two weeks ago, I think he came back from vacation. Uh, and we were anticipating he might look at it then. Uh, Dan, you, you might recall, you, you'd looked at the statutes. You weren't sure there might have been a provision in the statute that allowed for the pause. Uh. But if you haven't looked at it since then, then hopefully we wouldn't know for sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just, I, I'm not recalling it specifically. There's a lot of issues, obviously. Looking through some, some emails and I, I think you're right, Tim. I think we did discuss it. After, uh, Tim had been involved, I think we did discuss it, but I'm just not, um, recalling quickly enough, I guess.
Yeah, we would like a, we would like an answer on that in the near future, if possible. We've got three separate DDAs and we definitely would like to, to. To treat them the same.
Okay, absolutely.
Correct.
Actually, there's four DDAs.
Okay.
City, city, well, city has a DDA.
As well, correct, but we were discussing these three specifically. Any, any discussion, yes?
Yeah, um, this is the smallest of, this is the smallest evaluation of any of the DDAs. This, this, this is going to strip, strip quite a bit out and, um. It's not equal to the others. I mean, uh, we're talking a very small area of the county. And a very small amount in the total scheme of things. I mean, and you're not. This is a, like I've said before, this is a, uh, this isn't a made up thing that somebody in the county came up with. To form DDA's and how, how to fund them. This is all done through the legislature of the state. So when somebody puts on a millage, a request for a millage, they gotta understand that. A portion of it goes to a different entity because of laws the state has allowed. We're not, nobody's stealing money from, from an entity or anything like that. It's just all done legally. I mean, I, I don't, I, I, I don't care this perception that people throw out there that. Oh, you're stealing money away from nine one one or from anybody that collects money. Uh, on a, uh, on a millage. It's just, that's part of doing business. You, you, you're an entity that wants a millage. You come to the commissioners, you ask, put it on, the voters go for it. You must, everybody has to understand that. A portion, a very small portion that is gonna go to a DDA for a number of DDAs. Because that DDA, that law that the state has passed, the DDAs, is how they are funded. We're not equal with the other ones. I don't, I, I don't feel that we're, we're, we're not treating them. Fairly.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott. Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Benny David.
Yes. Item seven G, resolution to authorize adjustments to the fiscal year twenty twenty-two Ogumah County budget. This resolution is sponsored by county administrator Tim Delahanny. On September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, the board of commissioners adopted resolution twenty-one dash one five zero. To approve general appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and has authorized certain amendments since that time. The Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act requires local units of government to maintain a balanced budget and periodically adjust. The budget to reflect revised revenue and expenditure levels. It is necessary to adjust the budget as a result of updated revenue and expenditure projections. Fund transfers, reappropriations, accounting and contractual changes, errors and omissions, and additional appropriation needs. Proposed resolution directs the county administrator to make necessary transfers to adjust revenues and expenditures to balance the fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Ogumah County General Fund Budget at ten million six hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. And we reviewed those in the committee of the whole.
Um, for the record, there was an adjustment. I've heard from a couple of commissioners since this was presented at the council meeting concerning the board budget. And per DMs that are projected through the end of the year. So that adjustment was made in this draft. And that new, uh, general fund budget be ten million six hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven sixty-three.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Ten million six hundred and sixty-two thousand and how much?
Seven sixty-three.
I'll support.
We have a motion with support. Is there any discussion?
What?
Roll call vote.
Did you second it?
I mean.
Commissioner Serbrook and Commissioner Newbecker. Sorry.
Uh, I got a question. Just trying to formulate it here.
Commissioner Silver, or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Scott.
Yeah. Uh, we're seeing. All, all, all the revenue is, Tim, I guess, I'm directing toward you. All the revenue is, is increases, right?
Um, there are a couple of decreases.
Oh, there is.
Uh, navigating here, um, we didn't do that grant this year, so that, that budget's being, uh. Things zeroed out, but being nullified. Um, there was, I'm gonna guess probably an expense or something or, or revenue. Uh, less than expected from last year on one of those homeland security grants. So that revenue, uh, was reduced.
Right.
And those are the only two. The rest of them are increases.
But on the expense side, we got quite a, quite a bit of. Quite a bit of increases, but it aggregate were below.
Aggregate, we're dropping the expense total by fifty-three thousand, five ninety-six.
And tomorrow we have a meeting on twenty-three budget, so I guess we'll bring this spreadsheet back.
I'm gonna try not to, I'm gonna try to focus on twenty-three tomorrow.
Well.
Twenty-two.
I mean, I, I gotta agree with Commissioner Newbecker sometimes when you gotta take a look at where you've been to take a look at where you're going.
Yeah.
And if we've been having a culture of expanding certain line items, then, and we wanna change that. I think we need to take a look at that. That's all I got.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Benny David.
Yes.
Yes.
Item seven H claims. We have a total of ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two thou- ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two. Jeez. What'd you say?
That number.
And, and sixty-one cents, geez.
Ninety-eight though.
Nine eight, seven, two point six one.
And eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-one cents.
Bingo.
I'd make a motion.
We have a motion with surprise and questions, uh.
Square away.
Which one?
Who reviewed them? Can you guys go over them quickly? Maybe you'll.
Myself.
Yeah.
Maybe you'll answer my questions before I even ask them. Can you give us a rundown of them?
Can we start, Mark?
Go ahead.
Commissions, Emma, N M R E, uh, their portion. Uh, was a big part of that, uh, building department, B S and A, software was thirty-five, forty-six. Roughly, um, childcare facilities ate up about five thousand of that seven thousand. Um, district court, uh, being paid out, uh. Paid out fifteen fifty for lean on that energy council. There were seven lawyers. And their, whatever they did, um. That's about it.
What's the Anderson, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Serbrook.
Commissary, um, ten thousand. That's for the grant, I believe it is, for the hot water heater over there. The final bill's gonna come to fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars by the time that's all said and done.
Boy, we have a lot of water.
Well, if my, if my understanding is, and, and up frankly, I'm rather upset with that company. Because they have not even started to work until they get this deposit. I understand that thing's leaking three to four gallons an hour. Our water bill's gonna be huge. There's water just pouring down the drain over there. I can't believe that the company would force a governmental unit to come up with ten thousand dollars when they know we're gonna pay the doggone bill. I mean, that's just.
They're all doing it to us.
Yeah.
It's fence company up there and Park's doing the same thing. He's trying to get all his money upfront.
We go.
What's, what's this Anderson Radio for five hundred and four dollars? Anderson Radio Incorporated, this commissary supplies, eight hundred and four dollars. What's, what's?
Probably radio's in the jail. They, they're the Motorola Anderson those.
I had another question too.
All the, those appropriations, adding up the ARPA funds.
Yeah, I seen that warrants.
Probably according to their Ogumah County, but I think that, that's the one that went to, uh.
Thirty-one, forty-four, ninety for judicial information, so doing user fee for they do the warrants for July September.
Commissioner Serbrook's going over support, Hank.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner.
The, uh. Bridgester deeds automation fund, there was a hosting fee for July September for twenty-two hundred dollars. As Commissioner, well, I said that childcare. Middle County detention was four thousand, nine hundred, three dollars. So that was the vast majority of that.
And what did you have, Commissioner Newbecker?
I just. Noticed the emergency dispatch, uh, the warrants, fifteen hundred dollars this, this time. It seems kinda high.
And then there's another one for three fifty on there. There's two separate bills on there for that.
It depends on who they charge. One was for the courts. That was the fifteen fifty.
Number of warrants going through the system.
And I had one more, let me find it. I'm sorry. Was a big one too.
Can you say, I think way back when, we should have brokered a deal with them to have them do our warrants and. For the price of the run. That got bypassed, so. Now we're paying more.
Well, we spent that ten, we gave Sting the ten thousand dollars.
We were told a lot of things from a lot of different departments, you're told in the courts that if we weren't writing all the tickets on the freeway, that. Possibly you can lay somebody off. That never happened, but that person's still up there. Why can't they do warrants? We were told that we gave the sheriff, not this sheriff, but the last sheriff, we gave him the sergeant. They, they would do the warrants. We didn't even give them the sergeant and all of a sudden they appeared. And got paid and everything else. Um. You know, we've been told a lot, a lot of things, you know, that we wouldn't have to pay these bills.
What's this Lakeman Associates for six hundred and two dollars and fifty-eight cents? This is twenty twenty-two grant year.
Remuneration, remuneration.
Other. Other thing made.
Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Benny David.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Item eight, unfinished business. Any commissioners? Item nine, administrators report.
Start off with, uh, this thing you note that was addressed to the board from the family court, uh, which probate court. And the friend of the court thanking you for the event that was hosted on Monday, uh, which did go off quite well. I know the weather tried to ruin it a couple of times, but we persevered. Um, did wanna provide an update on the water heater. Again, that was an emergency purchase, uh, in that, as I understand it, completely installed now. Completely paid for, so the, the water leak just, uh, ended.
Good.
Um, and yeah, I mean, I, I keep talking to Chris too about how it got to this point. I mean, when it starts to leak. That's, we, we need to start paying attention, but any event that, that one is addressed. That does raise a question of, uh, long-term planning. We have how many other hot water heaters over there? Uh, the same size, uh, that we just make sure when we do our budget planning that. Particularly in a fund like commissary, that we, uh, leave enough in there that we lock away for purchases like this. For, for things that come up that we can't anticipate. Uh, but in this case, we know just because of the age of the water heaters, their life. It's being spent, so, uh, but we're already on the road to doing that. We have our capital improvement plan and, and hopefully we remember to do that. We spend an annual basis. Asset management. Asset management module, uh, that went way smoother than we had any right to expect. So the, the entire program was installed and yesterday, all of our fixed assets were loaded onto the program. We had training. Uh, we had training scheduled for today that was not needed. Uh, we do have some blanks to fill in now. Uh, but we are gonna combine not only our fixed asset list, but gonna take all of the insurance inventory that we have to have annually. Put that on the system as well. So like our vehicles, all the VIN numbers will be there. We'll know what they're depreciated to. Uh, we'll push a button, we'll produce our insurance report instead of squatting it all for two weeks every year, uh, trying to gather all this together. So that, you know, added bonus, uh, but everything just transferred smoothly. Couldn't have asked for a better transition, so it's there. Mary's gonna be working on plugging in some of those holes, but, uh, it's there. It's, uh, actually, uh, working well of all of our other financial. Modules that we have, so any comparisons that we need to do or, uh, any reports that we need to coordinate, we can do it. So again, very, uh. This doesn't happen, but it goes this smooth, so it's a, a nice surprise. Which then takes us to Nova time. We, I talked to Tracy at the last payroll. It went smoothly. Uh, our last big test is gonna be, uh, with the Labor Day holiday to make sure all of the holidays are calculating correctly. Pretty confident that they will, uh, because as we were building this, we went through the Independence Day holiday. And I think we might have had Memorial Day in there on one of the groups. So, um, we at least know what to look for, but it went very smoothly. Uh, starting to act as advertised, so hoping that's a trend that we'll see continue. And I'm confident that it will. Uh, finally, we did hire a custodian. Uh, she will begin on August twenty-second. Uh, we did conduct four interviews. Uh, we had four interviews scheduled. We had one no show. Uh, but one candidate was clearly, uh, the, the best choice, Tony Miller. And she has, uh, completed a lot of her paperwork. She still needs to go through the, the employee physical and, uh, what have you. And she's in her, uh, notice period to her current employer, so she will join us on Monday, the twenty-second. Then, well, once again, before we staff them at the department.
Good.
So that's, that's it.
Um, any questions for Tim? Commissioners.
Um. I guess I'll just bring this up to, uh, everybody and Tim, since he's part of it. I've talked in the past about a. Uh, pervert, pervert vendor list. Um, so that we're operating with. Vendors that we, we. Uh. That ourselves and, and have a list. When you look at the claims, meeting after meeting, we're, we're seeing the names of companies pop up. Reimburse people for different repairs because they take it some other place. I'm, uh, I'm especially concerned about record keeping for vehicles. If we're taking multiple places, then are we, are we, do we have a file on a particular vehicle? That shows where it goes different places. If it goes to one place, they, I would expect that, that vendor to have a file. On a particular item or vehicle. But are we tracking those kind of things?
For cost and. And the shape of it, you know, everything. So I'd like to look at.
That's what that's what Tim just talked about, the asset management. That should all be.
There's that in the then the preferred vendor delight. That's what I'm saying.
There's actually a section, sure, my terminology is wrong, but a. Box that we can fill out with each police vehicles as the example. Every time somebody touches that vehicle, if it's for decals, if it's for an oil change, if it's for new tires or whatever. We're able to record that now and actually attach even a an invoice to it. So it will pop up. And we already keep track of the vendors, so that's that's not a problem. But for each individual vehicle, I don't know if that's been done in the past or not, but we can do it moving forward for sure.
Well, with a preferred list, we're looking at licensed and insured vendors for different things. We're not just running down to my brother-in-law's shade cheat or garage and getting something done. A lot of people think that, hey, you know. This is the way you can operate. You can operate like this because why? Where's small town? So we gotta we gotta watch. We're here to watch the money and and watch the assets.
Who will be the one to input that data, say on a vehicle? Who will be the one to?
Because it's in B S and A, the responsible department can do that. So if we have an oil change on a patrol car, sheriff's office can do it. And you're already submitting the invoices, right? So it's while you're in there, this is what we did. Changed the oil, rotated tires, whatever it is. That can be put in there at whatever level you want. It's it's. We had the windshield wiper blades changed. If you want that, I'll put that in there. So let's. Any department will be able to do that and then we'll maintain the record that way. But just as everyone is done, you know, I'm submitting the invoices. This is what I had done. Goes on the asset. So it's tied to it.
That's the whole purpose of it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, elected officials and department head reports. Clerk.
Brett Kildner, Ogumah County Clerk. We had our election. We were here till two thirty-ish AM. The, obviously you guys know that the. Commissioners, there's gonna be some new commissioners. Coming township had a village that failed for the transfer station. And hail area schools, which only affected Hill and Logan Townships, they had an operating village that passed. And then I was also gonna say Nova time. Tracy had said Monday that that seemed to go really smooth. So we're pleased with that so far. And then the other thing and the last thing, our office is. The program that we use for our court. They're upgrading it. We're migrating to a new system. So we're going through training right now. That should be, I think it's the twenty-fourth or twenty-sixth of the month. That it should be into effect. So we are busy and they're getting all that together and then. Next week I plan on being back.
Clerk, or excuse me, treasurer, geez, come on, nothing to report? Sure.
Oh, could you? You're not gonna tell us about the tax sale?
I would never bring in information with me because even though the sale is final, there's still an opportunity for the person who made the purchase to back out. Though I don't wanna give you stats that are unofficial. I wanna wait till everything is signed, so they've been delivered and then I'll report it tonight.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
It's good. We did stats on our ORB as of Monday, started May twenty-eighth. We had a total of forty-five and a half hours patrols, forty contacts. There's definitely room for improvement on this stats. I'm not totally liking what I'm seeing, so. I think they should be up further than that, more than that, but. The challenge for basically we got four deputies, certified deputies that's working at the grant. Within this grant, they have to be certified officers and that's the challenge. So all four of these deputies have time jobs, so we're just putting in whenever they can. And it turned out to be forty-five and a half hours of patrol foster. It rose for the most part. That's where our problem areas are at. So there's there's room for improvement and it's in the house right now, Michigan Sheriff's Association is standing behind us. We're trying to get this. So it's not a not certified officer that can that can enforce these violations. So we're waiting on a signature. If that happens, then I don't have to be certified officer. The officers that we have that are not certified to plug in these hours. So we're hoping that will take place by next year to to give these folks a little bit more concentrated control. Anyway, I wanna foster Tuesday. And explain this to them and explain that there is definitely room for improvement, so.
If we don't use the funding that we receive for that grant, like is there a possibility next year we could receive less money?
It's a possibility, but I'm not, I I don't know if that will happen. So we're we're gonna do whatever we can. We got a month left to go. So we're gonna try to plug in and get as many hours as we can and try to fill that grant. So we've got a little bit of time left.
Can a non-certified officer write tickets?
They cannot, they cannot patrol or be.
Right now, but, oh, so I guess.
Yeah.
Never mind.
Okay, that's all I have on that, but but like I say, there's there's room for improvement. So I'm glad I pulled that stat, got that done, so I know where exactly where we're at. Also, we got stats for the month of July. That would be our normal road patrol. We had three hundred and one complaints in the month of July, so very, very busy. There's a breakdown on on criminal criminal warrants. It's a it's a low blow what took place the whole month of July. On the backside of that page is the hours. Townships on patrol.
Are you okay if we like print this off and and give this to our our townships?
No, that's fine.
Sheriff made the same report to Foster Township the other night. I'm glad he did because they're the ones that really.
Yeah, they're suffering up there and I get it. I I know what's up there. I've been up there and told that myself, so yeah, they've got they've got a problem. We're gonna address it somewhere or another. Hopefully that 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 bill will be passed. Moving on to animal control. He had seventy-two calls. A call back to forty-five, so it's it's like you said, every morning he's in, it'll be an update he's working on. Directions. What we're doing now temporarily, we're housing Gladwin inmates. They're doing some major repairs over there, tearing up the cement floors. I think they got some. Plumbing issues over there, so we're taking all their inmates housing form, so. I don't know when that when that project could be complete. I have to get Brian on that. Anyway, that's what we're doing. We're filling up our spaces over there. And that's all basically all I have. We're moving forward, still looking for people. It's looking pretty good for us right now. I don't wanna. Speak out too late, too early, but I'm not what I think.
What do you mean?
By hiring people.
Oh.
We're looking.
So you have some qualified applicants?
Gotta see what their backgrounds suit for all of them.
That's refreshing. Would you know when the animal. Control in, geez, vehicles coming in? Struggling today with words.
I just talked to. Podcast's not been built yet.
Oh, no.
Had some setbacks. Hoping so. Did we get the box? The box didn't arrive. Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday, the box arrived, so. It's half the battle. We got the box over there. Anyway, thank you.
Any questions for the sheriff?
No.
Go ahead, Commissioner Scott.
Just had a question. Oh, what's Gladwin paying us to?
It says right, it says right here, we're hosing them under the same terms as we house Escoda inmates.
Oh.
I would assume it'd be.
Are they bringing them to us?
What's that?
Are they bringing them here?
Uh, no, we'd be making the. Transports down there.
Then it's not apples to apples to what we're. Escoda brings theirs here.
It's true.
That's the contract.
It's true. It's true.
Well, if they need a place, I I'd tell them that they got cars.
And and they maybe, I don't know. I don't know that answer.
I bet they got a van too.
I'm sure they do.
That's added expense.
I'm just glad we're doing it. I would say making money. We're just maybe not losing as much money. Just make sure they're paying for their own prescription.
Talking to Gaylord that they're they're still needing help and all they're having jail. Occupation.
I would have third with Brian.
Occupation issues.
Gaylord is?
They were they're trying to get a jail approved up there, but it didn't, it hasn't passed.
I I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, cuz how how are how close are we to capacity?
To say on there doesn't say the total. There's probably more because prior, you know, after this report was made, I'm sure he's got more inmates.
I guess it's hard to understand cuz you got bad days and he attempted to explain all that to me, but yeah, I don't, I don't know.
As as of today, I don't know.
Okay, any other questions for the sheriff? Thank you. Thank you for this, this. This updates, it is appreciated. And I think our township's like seeing that as well. How many hours are. Monitored. Any, I don't think we have any other elected officials or department heads in the room. Any on the phone? Denise? Nope. Jeff from Veterans? Do you have anything to add?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. No, we did. We we are advertising for the benefits council position, so we've gotten a few applications in. But we extended the application process until September fifth, I believe. So we we went one more month with advertising, so to see if we can get a few more applications in. And then hopefully we can do interviews next month and. Have somebody new here in October.
Perfect. Thanks, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Any other elected officials or department head on the phone? Item eleven minutes from the floor. I don't believe we have any. Item twelve motions for adoption. I don't believe we have any. Item thirteen committee reports. Commissioner Sorek.
It's in the, excuse me, Westbridge City. Pretty short suite for the city. DHHS, same thing, Westbridge Township last night. Seems that Taylor Doris' parent company, which is Borso Manufacturing. Is extremely interested in the old Westbury Steel property on seventy-six. They're looking for a twenty twenty-two acre site and I believe they said that one's twenty-one acres. So the township has been in conversation with. That parent company and there is nothing concrete yet, but. Possibly going to make an offer to the township on that property.
Like as an expansion or as a move?
It'll be a brand new facility. Taylor Door will stay where it is, but this will just be a. New facility. A satellite, but it's like what I wanna say is that. Like two hundred thousand square feet.
Wow.
Of manufacturing. So the township is. Excited about that, so it may happen again, it may not. There was an I think, there's just some discussion phase right now, so. That's it.
Commissioners, Commissioner Scott.
I attended my four township meetings. Port and Township. Discussed our ORV ordinance. They are spending some money on ARPA ARPA funds. On a generator and some air conditioning units. Edwards Township. And reviewed their contract over Brewer Road update. They they are ordering a zoning packet to do with blight from their attorney there. They of course do their own zoning down there. And they're also using ARPA funds for painting their township wall. Foster Township's got a new sexton. At the cemetery, they're taking ARPA funds and paving part of the fire department parking lot. They passed a new personnel policy up there and they okayed fireworks on. Porch U Lake on Labor Day. Ogumah Township's talking with other townships about blight control. And then Parks and Rec was this week. And the revenues are on on track for both parks and our nature park fences about half half completed. Planning will be later this month and I guess a lynch mob is already being rounded up for that. Sheriff, we might even ask for a deputy that night.
For what?
Planning commission.
Why? What's?
I guess there's some kind of cell tower on the east side of the county someplace and.
East side?
East, oh, your way.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know. So it's there's.
What's the name of the tower?
Well, I guess there's a, it was brought up at the ZVA and the old lynch mob showed up. To to express their negative feelings toward it.
You know which cell tower?
No, no, I don't know anything about it really. Dan, do you know where you were on the ZVA?
By Reese Lake.
Where's that?
Which lake?
Reese.
Reese, Debbie Carr. Some more to come on that?
Yeah, so that's later this month and then next what next week will be the airport meeting. And and a road commission meeting next week, so I'll have more to report later in the month.
Commissioner Neubacher?
Got airport next week.
Commissioner Van?
Uh, like Commissioner Scott said, we had Parks and Rec. Fences are. Getting up slowly. They have three nice white bucks up there or three nice bucks up there. One's totally white. I guess they've got some pretty nice antlers. People should go look at them. At RV Park, we had a few electrical problems. They've got most of those worked out, I believe. The new shower doors are installed and some new plumbing, so I think they're gonna work on one minor water leak. Ogumah County nine-one-one, we met last night. Got two dispatchers out sick, two on vacation, so they're doing some swapping around of personnel. They talked about the building repairs. The state nine-one-one board met. Actually, nine-one-one was gonna be not compliant. What they found out up in the courts is because they've got a screen up and actually nine-one-one could watch the goings on. During court, but what they were worried about, that's not the problem. The problem was after court's done, you have a lawyer sitting there talking to. A person, they can't be watching over there. It's confidential. So the judge has had everything shut down. They now meet, now they're complying. Everything is good there. They took care of it really quick, so they're all sit there. They're gonna find out. They might be able to have them on screen, just no voice. They're all sit there, they're going to find out, they might be able to have them on screen, just no voice, um they're working on that. Um. They questioned the the formal village, which we passed, so they were, they were happy that it was approved, they'll go on them in in November, and that's all I have.
I attended uh Logan Township. They are in turmoil again, um. This time it's related to a Styles Lake over there, uh weed patrol, special assessment. Um, there's more to come on that. They're in quite a bit of turmoil over there, um. Seems to be ongoing. Also attended the village, that was an hour later because of trying to get uh enough people together to form an actual um. Meeting is is quite an ordeal over there, um but so it was an eight P M meeting, which they had a pretty good turnout, so. Basically just discussed uh their water treatment um over there. The blight issues, talked to them a little bit about that, is a pretty, pretty quick meeting. Um, attended Mills. They talked about their ARPA funds and they uh Lapum was there and and uh presented two different plans. One for Skidway Lake Beach and one for the park across from my clinic, I don't know the name of that park. Um, quite a bit of money, uh the Skidway Beach plans would be very similar to the Elbow Lake plans. Um, they also talked about their their hall, theirs in pretty, pretty rough shape. Um, they talked about, it's basically like one big room, um it's a very old building, I don't know how old, but basically when people come in to vote there, there's no confidentiality. The um individuals that that help with the election don't have a place to eat, it's just, it's it's a really, really rough building, so they are talking about possibly are. Building a new one, they're going to have a special meeting on that. Um, talked a little bit about blights, their blight officer is starting to write some tickets, um there's also a day for tires. Um. And I don't recall that day. I brought up um the high banks. Um, Lance, you had, I talked to you that day and you said you'd left a message with the supervisor, he denied receiving that message, um.
He meant yesterday and we talked about it.
Oh, good, so do you want to give the update, well, I anyways, during the meeting, I told him you had reached out and he said he hadn't, so I I asked him to reach out to you, do you want to give an update on that, or would you rather wait?
Um, just the update is what they did at the board meeting, I guess a couple of trustees weren't interested.
Um, it was about a five second conversation, maybe less. Um, there was not even a conversation, I I said that we had discussed it at the committee of the hall and you guys, um obviously we're doing a very poor job of maintaining that property. Um, it's beautiful property, obviously you guys have have volunteered and did some staining, um. And had voiced your concerns about the updated uh of the lack of updates to that, or ma- maintenance to that property, um the we talked about uh selling that property and you guys should be first on the list, it's in your township and. Like literally, it was not even discussed. So who, um I I'm pretty sure they're going to be off the table, did he confirm that?
He confirmed what happened at the meeting, you know, just exactly what you said, it was very few words, very little time, no, so.
Yeah, they didn't make a motion on, I I'm not really sure, it wasn't even so, uh they did briefly say, what about the states, and I said, well, again, our first stop was you guys, so. That's where it was left, so that'll be more to come on the committee of the hall. Um, Michigan Works, there wasn't a, that's, there was a meeting, but unfortunately there wasn't a quorum, so we weren't able to hold a meeting. Um. Remind everybody, we have a ten A M budget meeting tomorrow morning. Also, we have the open house for the daytime treatment center tomorrow, what time is that?
One o'clock.
One o'clock, also wanted to give recognition to the, for the employee appreciation luncheon, uh Mr. Serbrook. Who hosted that, um also wanted to uh give a special thanks to Mary, who put a lot of effort in time into that, along with Paul, who did all of the cooking. For the great burgers. Um. The burgers were better. And the fair is next week, so uh i- if it, please support that as well, so that was my, my, my report. Um, did I, any, did anybody miss anything? Item fourteen, general public comment. Any general public comment, this is any item, any subject banners, any in the room? Any on the phone? Any public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Or. Motion to adjourn from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Serbrook, all in favor.
I I.
Pose adjourn at ten fifteen.